Gonzalez, Chair of the Planning Board, and I call this meeting June 1st, 2020-21 of the Brockton Planning Board to order. This meeting is being recorded in accordance with, recorded in accordance with the government order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, General Chapter 20. Real-time public participation and comment can be addressed to the Planning Board utilizing the Zoom virtual meeting software for remote access. This application will allow users to view the meeting and send comment or question to the Chair via question and answer function. Be available on the city's webpages. All votes will be done via roll call to ensure account accuracy. As your name is called, please indicate that you are present. We have Larry Hassan.
Here, present.
James Sweeney.
Here.
Sam Abrose.
Here.
And Tony Gonzalez, present. Okay, Pam.
Okay, we have the review and acceptance of the minutes from 5:41. So if you all read them.
Yes, someone like to make a motion to accept the minutes?
Motion to accept the minutes for May 4th, 2021.
A second.
As Sam was not there, she can't second, and she can't vote on this, but Jim can.
All right, thank you, Jim. Roll call.
Okay, we have an extension request for 93 Center Street. You people will all think, notice as the.
To make a motion with the extension.
Okay, we have two sets of A and R plans. And they are looking to combine them all into just one new parcel. So we need a motion.
For this A and R for North Pearl Street.
Motion to approve endorsement of the A and R plan for 34 North Pearl Street.
Second.
Okay, roll call Larry Hassan.
Yes.
James Sweeney.
Yes.
Sam Abrose.
Yes.
Tony Gonzalez, yes.
Okay. I'm moving, oops, Scott, whoops, where did you go, Scott? I don't want that. Scott. I can't move anybody, Rob. Yeah, all I can do is chat with them, that won't let me move anybody.
I see him.
88 Myrtle Street. Is one of those situations where these are two buildings on one parcel that existed prior to the time of the enactment of zoning. So although the parcels are going to be very tiny and probably not buildable if anything were to happen to them, they can be separated. Scott?
That's basically it, Pam. Chapter, Chapter 41, Section 81L allows us, under an A and R plan, to divide property that has two buildings that were on the property prior to zoning. In this case, both of the buildings were constructed in 1925. So it affords us the opportunity to divide the property as long as each of them has frontage access and area, in which case both of these lots do.
So it's just a, to endorse the plan.
They're both multifamily's, right? They have enough parking there and all that, too?
They do, and we created a parking easement on Lot B. The, the entire property, the entire two lots are basically all paved. So they have the ability to come in off of Myrtle Street and there about eight parking spaces between the two lots.
Madam Chair, can I ask a question?
Sure, yes.
That law that allows you to divide the parcel with buildings, would that be even if the property, the two buildings, one was a garage and one was a residential building?
I think there's.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, yeah, it just says buildings, it doesn't specify.
Doesn't matter what the structures are, there's two separate structures can be divided.
Okay, and the applicant, is that the correct owner, the applicant? Because we have a real problem. I went down there and looked at it today. And the people that own the house on the corner of Myrtle and Third erected a stone wall and a fence which now blocks the second egress that home that sits in the back. They can't really get out their door, the door won't open completely, and when they open the door, they're kind of stuck in the alley. So it's kind of a dangerous situation. Even though there's an egress access allowed, they've blocked it with a wall and a fence.
Yeah, Mrs. Reese, who we have listed as the owner applicant, she just recently bought it within the last month. So she's a new owner of the property.
Okay, I just wanted to know who to cite in the morning. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so does someone want to make a motion to endorse this A and R?
Motion to approve 88 Myrtle Street.
Second.
A second. Right, roll call Larry Hassan.
Yes.
James Sweeney.
Yes.
Sam Abrose.
Yes.
Tony Gonzalez, yes.
Okay, thank you, folks. Good night.
You're welcome.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Before we go any further, I do want to remind the attendees that we are following the posted agenda. And most people are here for the two large definitive subdivisions. And those are at the end of our agenda this evening. So Lou, if you hang on for just a couple minutes, we shall be getting to those shortly. And then when you want to, once the applicants have made their presentations and the board has asked questions, then they open it up for the public hearing. So we'll be getting to you shortly. Thank you.
We have three lot releases. 20 Charlotte Street. And all these are in your Google Drive. 20 Charlotte Street, the road was completed, the utilities are in, and we received the approval letters from DPW. Same story with Granite Street Extension. This was an old subdivision. But the road had never been completed. The builder walked away from it. Somebody else purchased the remaining lot and went in and finished all the roadway. And he has also received his approval from DPW. Lots 2, 3, and 4 Quincy Street are Jim Morrissey subdivision. This one's a little bit different. The plan is waiting to be signed. It's in the city clerk's office right now. There'll be two subdivision plans for you to sign sometime next week. Because we don't meet next month. In order that the applicant doesn't miss 30 days, he's asked that we release these lots pending his recording of the plan and covenant. And we've done this before on, for, when we missed July. If you vote to release those lots, they'll be held by the office until he gives us the proof that the plan is on record. And that the covenant has gone on record. You mean with, with the signatures?
Correct. Have you signed this plan yet? This, this plan is in the city clerk's office waiting for his endorsement. So Rice was going to pick him up tomorrow morning. And I was going to arrange to have you come in and sign everything that needs to be signed all in one day. So you're not making multiple trips back. So it'll be sometime next week when everything's set. But that's the only one that's a little different. And so if you vote to release those lots, they'll be held by the office until we receive.
Right.
His recording. Everything else is ready to go.
That's clear to me. Does, do any other board members have questions?
No, I, I don't have any questions. It's okay for us to.
You can take them together.
Right, to take them together, but on lots 2, 3, and 4, just pending recording and planning, the plan and covenant, correct?
Right, correct.
And I am quite sure it'll get done, because if it's going to be held, they can't do anything until they're released from the department.
Right.
Okay. I don't have any other questions.
I don't have any questions either.
Someone want to make a motion?
Motion to approve lot releases 20 Charlotte Street, Lot 2, 3, and 4 Quincy Street. Quincy Street pending recording and plan covenant.
Second.
Okay, roll call. What about Lot 3 Granite Street? Do we have to do that one separately?
Oh, no.
Sorry, I missed that, because you kind of faded out, Pam, on it. I didn't really.
Oh, sorry. So that's the same thing as Charlotte Street. He completed the roadway work and we have his DPW letter.
Okay, so in addition, a motion to approve Granite Street.
Second.
Okay, roll call Larry Hassan.
Yes.
James Sweeney.
Yes.
Sam Abrose.
Yes.
Tony Gonzalez, yes. All right, any other housekeeping items, Pam?
I'm done.
So I'm going to review the agenda, but before I do, we'd like to ask the applicants, due to the long agenda and being, consider everyone's time to keep your presentations to five minutes. And if any residents have questions for, or speaking in groups, if maybe you could designate one speaker or keep your questions, comments to 30 seconds or less, please. Okay. Number one, permission to remove to zoning board. That's been withdrawn for 60, 70 Field Street.
That was he, they.
Oh, continue to August.
Yeah.
Sorry, he changed that, continue to the August meeting. Okay. Number two, permission to return to zoning board. This has been withdrawn. This is 16 Albert Street. Number three, permission to return to zoning board, 63 LaFoy Street. Number four, permission to return to the zoning board of appeals. Property is 25 East Battle Street. We have number five, site plan approval, 159 Tory Street. Number six, definitive subdivision. That one's continued to August 3rd. Number seven, definitive subdivision. Map 16 Route 188, part of Plan 97 Pleasant Street. We have number eight, definitive subdivision. Map. I'll just skip down to Rockland 97 Pleasant Street. Okay, did I catch them all? Looks like I did. All right. We have up first, LaFoy, 63 LaFoy Street. Attorney Paul Clancy.
And Pam, I've now remade you co-host, so you should be able to get in.
I see the applicant is here.
Yeah, I see him.
But I don't see. What is PK Boston? Why has he moved already?
So who is the applicant?
Paul Clancy and Express.
Attorney Paul Clancy, Express Enterprises.
Express Enterprises is there.
Paul Clancy is there.
Where is he?
Is that PK Law?
No, it's not, and I don't know that, that's the wrong office. I don't know.
Paul Clancy, if you're there, would you raise your hand, please?
I'm guessing the applicant will have to do it himself.
The applicant's here.
Right, and I am trying to move him and he is not moving.
Yeah, I've tried three times.
It's, yeah, he's just not, they're not.
Do we want to try the next one and come back to this?
No, he's here. But trying to move him to panelists, it says.
Okay, everybody stop doing that there.
Okay. So he's the applicant.
So if you turn on your camera and make your presentation, please.
Express Enterprises here.
Hello? Hello?
Hi.
Hi.
Bye. I'm sorry, I'm just trying to get a hold of Attorney Clancy. For some reason, I can't reach him right now. I'm not sure what's going on. He knew we had this meeting today.
Would you like us to move you on the agenda for now? See if you can reach him?
Yes.
All right. We'll go to Attorney Robert.
So when, when you do get a hold of Mr. Clancy, let, raise your hand, so just to signify that you have him. Or actually do a Q and A, do a Q and A. And we'll know, okay?
All right, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, so up next, 25 East Battle Street, Attorney Robert Pellegrini.
That was PK.
I'm sorry, Pam.
That was PK Boston.
Okay, I've just promoted him.
And I don't know if there's anybody with him.
Attorney Pellegrini, is there anybody else with you?
Hi, sorry, I had to log off and log back in. My client should be here.
I see him.
That would be Barzola.
Yep, okay.
And I think perhaps Ed Jacobs would be joining as well, but I'm not sure.
There's Miguel Barzola also, is that also?
Yeah. Yeah.
What the heck is going on?
Eddie J, is that Ed Jacobs?
I'm trying to find it. I, I think probably, yeah.
Oh, there's Eddie J, yes, hand raised.
Okay, I see people.
So we're just waiting for Alfredo Barzola to turn on their camera.
I see Miguel Barzola, this Alfredo, too.
I'm comfortable with just Miguel. And it, and his wife Laura.
Okay.
All right, thank you. Please start your presentation.
All right, sorry about that. I had to shut my computer off, so I'm not sure where you left off. But this is regarding Barzola Holdings LLC. We were before the ZBA. Recently, the application was for half a dozen residential units. Convert it from what was there previously, which was a, it was a mixed-use church worship was really what it was for. So the, the owners didn't feel like reopening as a church would really be the greatest thing for the neighborhood, mainly because of parking. And so the proposal was just to convert. The front building had the first floor and the downstairs that was used for church worship, and then the back building has been used just basically for storage. It is fully sprinkled, but that's how it's been used previously. So the ZBA's response was that they were concerned about basically a, you know, visual buffer from the adjacent use, which is sort of a automobile repair. And the, the reaction that we have to that with these plans was to add a vinyl fence sort of along that whole part of the lot line, and then to protect that fence on, with a guardrail. And then some of the other concerns, I think we just sort of, one was that they didn't like, originally there was proposed to be parking adjacent to the actual structure. So by reducing the units by one, we were able to eliminate that parking entirely. And those were really the, the major changes to the plan that we're trying to come back and propose. So what I was hoping to do is at least get a dialogue with the planning board to see what you thought about that. We thought the changes were significant and significant enough that perhaps we could get back before the ZBA. We really didn't have a chance to dialogue at all with them during the hearings, so we certainly would have agreed to all this had we. But that just wasn't one of our options. Do you have the plan, or do you need me to try to put it up on Zoom?
I did not download it, so if you could put it up.
Okay.
That would be easier.
All right, this is going to be quite a feat for me, so give me one second, probably less than 10 seconds. Eddie, if you happen to have it, I'll take it from you. But, all right, let's see, I think we can do, share screen. Am I sharing?
Yes.
Yep.
Okay. So this was the variance plan, the. Ed, please jump in, but as you can see, I think you can, hopefully you can see my cursor. These are the four spots that we were able to remove with this change. And then right along this line was the concern that the ZBA.
Excuse me, we, we, I can't see your cursor, can anyone else?
No.
Okay.
No? Sorry about that.
We still see part of your shared drive, not just the whole plan, so I don't know if you can.
Accelerize.
Okay. Is this easier for you to see?
Yes.
Okay, sorry about that. Thank you for bringing that up. So these four spaces here were the ones that by eliminating one unit, we were able to remove. And then this lot line here is where, you know, their concern was about the visual impact between the two, you know, uses, which are obviously one's commercial, one is residential primarily. That's, that's primarily what we were trying to address. They, they brought up something we weren't even aware of quite a bit before the current owners even owned the parcel. There was some, some negative result in a ZBA application, which was, was a long time before. No one's brought it up to me, and I think it was regarding the two residential units that are there currently. But our point was that really, this is something that's already there. Obviously, my thought on it was it would be better as an economically viable property than one that's just lying around dormant. So this directly impacts their, their major comments. The ZBA, there was a motion to approve, and we lost that by one vote. So this is pointed directly at the two comments that we did hear during that hearing. So let me see. So can I ask Ed, is there anything else that you can bring up, Ed? Actually, is that still?
He just got bounced. Where is he? I saw him there a minute ago. Hang on just a second, please.
That's my luck, okay.
Oh, there he is. And Ed should be a panelist now.
All right. Hey Eddie, do you have any, anything you can add here? You're on mute.
Just by doing, by implementing the changes that Attorney Pellegrini brought up, we increased the green space. And another reason why the, over where the parking spaces are on the eastern side of the property, there's a parking easement for the neighbors over there that own the garage. And the concern with the zoning board was, you know, who was going to police that parking? Were they going to park, you know, on our property or whatever? So there's parking stops along that, those parking spaces, and there's a chain link fence, and I mean, there's a fence going up. And the idea of the parking stops would be to help with the, the snow plowing, smashing into the fence. And there's a guardrail on both sides of the fence, correct, Rob?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, that was, that was all I could come up with, yeah.
Okay, anything else? Is your presentation complete?
I, I could just maybe add that I, I did obviously see the planning department's report come in this morning, and I, I did take a quick look at, you know, Ranny v. Board of Appeals of Nantucket, which indicated that, you know, it's within the board's purview, of course, but something as small as a cosmetic change is really adequate for you to send it back to the ZBA if you saw. And obviously, you'd have to agree with that, but I certainly didn't want to not look that up without, before I came to you. I will stop sharing, so everybody has a normal screen.
All right, I'll, I'll open it up. It doesn't appear there's substantial change. You are in a residential district. There's two apartments there now. You could do three, but not five.
I think.
Adam, Madam Chair.
Yes.
The applicant has presented, or the applicant's attorney has presented a lot of new information that we did not have when reviewing the, the application to return to ZPA for our staff report. The only thing that was on the ZBA letter of denial was that there was no hardship. And, and obviously, if the board determines there's no hardship, it's very difficult to overcome that hardship or lack of hardship. So I don't know about, or, or, or nothing was described in the. So I don't know about or or nothing was described in the app in the denial that there was, you know. Needed a buffer between the parking and that there was. All the other things that the applicant provided, so. I think you need to take a look at that.
That should have come from zoning in the zoning report?
Well, it should have been in their zoning denial letter. If there were other concerns that the zoning board had. Right now, the only zoning board, the only concern that we know of from the zoning board. Was that the applicant had no hardship and therefore had no grounds for a variance.
Rob, you're you're right. I saw that in their denial. I don't know what the protocol is when you see something that doesn't really reflect the discussion at the hearing. But it was in the middle of COVID and it was difficult to get a hold of people over there. So I sort of let it ride. But what I said to you tonight. I would stake my reputation on is that was those were the issues raised at the hearing.
Madam Chair, can I address the applicant?
Yes.
Can you just highlight your major changes briefly again, please?
Absolutely. Yeah, let me see if I can just quickly share it again. So I think.
I've got a bigger I've got a bigger version, if you don't mind me sharing my screen.
Sure, how do I stop? Okay.
So unshare and I will share.
Oh, great. Okay.
Oops, let me go down a click.
That's much better. Thank you, Rob.
Well, Rob, this one's much better because it shows the the one they denied on the left and they show what we're proposing on the right.
Okay, great. So, all right, so what you're all seeing on the left side. Is showing a significantly larger paved driveway on the western side of the property. Which is to the left of the building between that, yes, right there. And we eliminated that. And then. And well, I'm I'm viewing this for the first time, so. So and then the the other thing is right along the parking easement, sort of on the easterly side, sort of on the opposite end. The concern there was they wanted to make sure that the residential use remained sort of. You know, boppered from the commercial use. So that was exactly the reason why we're proposing the vinyl fence protected by the guardrails. And obviously, as you can see. In reducing the number of parking by four, we had to reduce the number of units. So we took the large building in the back there, which is actually part of, you know. That main building too, but that was originally proposed to be two units. So now we're just proposing that to be one unit. I think it's a four bedroom. I'm sure my client will correct me if I'm wrong about that.
The one unit in the back is four bedrooms?
Yes.
And how many bedrooms are the other?
Everything else is two. There's a so there's two on the first floor, two on the second floor. They're both they're all two bedroom units. And I'll I'll add that. The owner is local. They work in Brockton, live in in Brockton and in the area. They're rather large. Large family, but they're all from Brockton.
And so now the new plan has how many parking spaces?
Eight. This is a conversion, so you need one parking space per unit. So technically, you would need five units under this. Under the bylaw, but you know, it's always better to have a couple more.
Okay, all right, very good. Any other questions from the planning board before I open up to public hearing?
Madam Chair, I I just want to point out or ask your question again. You're looking for five units and not six.
That's that's one that's one of the changes. Yes.
Okay, and I I do want to point out though that you're the drawing that is here. Does say a chain link fence typical as opposed to the vinyl fence typical.
Okay. That's an error. I'm 100% sure it's vinyl. We can.
Yeah, we'll get on it, Jacob's about that.
Yeah, I'm I'm not sure. That's definitely an error on that particular plan that you're staring at. See if I can get you something better.
No, it's okay. We can make a note of that in in their discussions.
Adam Chair, we have a really long night.
Yeah, any other questions from the planning board before we open up to public comment?
Madam Chair, it's Larry. I have a couple of questions. They're talking about there's a parking easement. Is there an easement already enforced with the butter, which is the looks like the body shop and things like that? As I see existing wide right away and then parking easement. And by doing what they're requesting. This is going to become, if it gets approved, a nonconforming lot. And I don't know how the zoning board is still going to fly with that. So those are actually three questions, sorry. I don't know if anybody can answer that.
I think I can try to address that, Larry. The parking easement has been on record and in place for a while. It's recorded, I believe, just on a plan. So it is a restraint that we had here. That neighbor wants to continue to use it and I believe uses it quite heavily. What what were the other ones? I'm sorry.
It was just, you know, looking at just the notes I have here. Even going to a five residential unit with you, you're still looking at a lot size that's below what. What is recommended by rezoning of 1600 square feet. So it's going to become a nonconforming lot, I assume, unless I can somebody correct me on that. Which I think may be a problem with zoning. I don't want to set you up to fail, but that's just a question I have.
That's um, that's correct, Larry. Actually, when we were before the board originally, it would have been a larger variance request than it would be now. Currently, with the number of units we're proposing, the variance would be for 3,700 square feet approximately. Because it's the bylaw requires 12,000 for the first three units plus 2,003 on top of that. So in our case here, we would we would require, what is it? Lawyers don't do math, 12, 14, 1600. So actually, it would be we're just under 2,000 square feet, I think. So I don't don't check my math. I'm trying.
That's fine. Thank you. That's all I had for questions.
Okay.
But there's a good point. You're still short on a lot size for five units. Four would make more sense.
Madam Chair, may I just ask one question, please?
Sure.
And who was it that's going to police that easement? I I think Mr. Hassan talked about that. I didn't hear the answer to that question.
Sure, okay, the the policing of the easement is is done between the two parties. So the party that actually benefits from the easement, which would be the neighbor. You know, obviously, they have certain rights as holders of that easement. So, you know, if my client tried to infringe upon that in any way, they would have a right to sort of. You know, I guess go to court and request relief. But the easement's been on record for so long that, you know, they'd have other rights that go along with that timeframe too. So it's really certainly nothing that we could ever unilaterally undo.
If I may, that easement's been in existence for a long time, as well as the right of way to get to the back property. It's not something that we're creating. This isn't a situation that we've created now. The situation is probably going to be better if approved, because the fence will be up. And that will actually separate what is now one property with an easement and a right of way on it to be more like two properties. Because of the fence.
All right, we're gonna open it up for public comment. Do you have anyone with their hand raised?
Yes, Madam Madam Chair, I have my hand raised. I'm sorry. Before we get into the public comment, I believe the lot is a little over 1,400 square feet or 14,000 square feet, excuse me.
14,000.
Just just as a. As an observation. With four units, you would be by right. And you wouldn't need to go to the zoning board. Five units makes you you need a variance. And in order to get that variance, you you're here to go through the return to ZBA. The biggest issue, though, is that the zoning board has already said you don't have a hardship for a variance for six units. You think you have a hardship for five units, but I haven't seen a hardship presented. And you might want to. Split the difference and say, okay, we'll do four units by right and be done with it. But I'm just putting that out there right now.
You can always send it back with that. Also, if you decided to send it back, you could send it back with that.
Yeah, I mean, I wasn't making the variance argument before the planning board. I think they have one, but it wasn't something that I wanted to take your time up with, to be honest. I could get into that, but I'm guessing Pam would give me the please don't do that nod. Yeah.
Okay.
It will be a five minutes.
So is there anybody, any attendees, anybody from the public who would like to question or comment on this project? Please use the raise hand feature or you can write your question in the Q and A and we will read your question online.
I don't see anyone.
I don't see anyone raising their hands.
Okay.
Madam Chair, proceed.
So I definitely the vinyl fence with the guardrail is important on the plan. I strongly advise to go to four units. But that would be your decision. Other planning board members, somebody want to make a motion?
FYI, for the two new members of the board, the chair cannot make a motion. She can only accept a motion.
And can you also further share with the planning board members, Rob? If they wanted to follow my suggestion, how they would vote, how they would need to vote?
If the planning board, if somebody were interested in making a motion that. To to allow a motion to allow the applicant to return to ZBA with a five unit project. Provided that the chain link fence along the easement is replaced with a vinyl fence. You would say so moved.
But she suggested a four unit.
That was my first. Go at it. Now, if you recommend that it go back, well, it wouldn't need to go back to ZBA if it were a four unit.
Well. But you have to take some action here somewhere.
And do they need all four votes?
Yes, they do.
They do need all four votes.
Okay. All right, any other questions from the planning board? Someone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion. Motion to return to planning board provided chain link fence is upgraded to vinyl.
You mean zoning board?
I'm sorry, zoning board to ZBA, yep.
And is that motion for five five units then, if you're saying return?
For five, motion for five units. If you want to repeat it, I will.
And is there a second? I'll second that. Okay, roll call. Larry Hassan?
Yes.
James Sweeney?
Yes.
Sam of Rose?
Yes.
Tony Gonzalez? No.
You failed to carry.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, board members.
All right. Good night, everybody.
Thank you. Good night. All right. Next, we have site plan approval for 159 Torrey Street. Who is speaking for this? Thorny Lee Golf Association.
Yeah, he's there. He should have been moved.
Brendan Kling, there we are.
Daniel Cerber.
I brought over Brendan Kling.
I'll be presenting Daniel Cerber and then Brendan Kling's here for help with civil water.
On your mark, get set, go.
Hey, so again, my name is Daniel Cerber. I'm the Senior Director of Development for Next Gridding. We're proposing a ground mounted fixed tilt 1 megawatt DC solar facility with battery storage on about three acres of land. At the north end of the Thorny Lee Golf Course. This project is set back over 300 feet from the nearest home structure and over 400 feet from the nearest right of way. The plot is adjacent to the staging area for the landscaping and the golf course. And those won't interrupt with golf or be visible from the course itself nor from homes or public roads. We're proposing 2,418 solar modules affixed to steel racking with no moving parts, so fixed tilt. We're going to utilize three 166 kilowatt string inverters. So those are smaller, less impactful than the large central inverter. This will be connected to a self-contained battery storage system, which also has a built-in fire suppression system, which utilizes. Water from an attached 440, 540 liter water injection skin. So we use no chemicals in our panels for pest control, for weed control and nothing to do with our battery storage system, fire suppressant. I know that's been a big topic of conversation in Massachusetts, but we only use water. This project was approved unanimously by the Conservation Commission on April 21st. The system cuts down no trees, makes no noise, there'll be audible to any butters. It won't be seen by any residents. Doesn't add traffic, it doesn't add septic, it doesn't. Add any strain to the school district and has no negative effect on the community. Proposed conversely generates income, tax income for the town, the city of Brockton. It generates income for Thorny Lee, which is an institution in the city. And it also helps fulfill the state's renewable energy goals. Again, I'm here with Brendan Kling, who did the civil work and created the plan you're looking at now. He's also gone through all the stormwater steps for this project and can answer any questions. But from here, I'm happy just to hand this back to Madam Chair and the planning board for questions.
Very nice presentation, Daniel. Clean cut, very detailed. I don't have any issues or questions. Any other questions from the other planning board members?
I do not have any questions.
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you.
All right, this is a yes.
Thank you. Sir, the five department access road, how wide is that?
Brendan, feel free to step in with that. Brendan, if you're talking, you're on mute.
Here. All right, I switched, I switched microphones. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
There we go.
Okay. Let's see, so the fire access road is a twelve foot wide gravel driveway with a thirty foot wide turning radius on the, the entrance turnaround.
The, the fire code requires a twenty foot access road? Or filing?
Twenty foot, okay.
And where on this is the, are the batteries gonna be?
They're gonna be at where the, it shows the equipment pads here at the southern part of the actual array. So right, right when you drive in, there's a inverter and transformer skid and a battery storage skid right there.
No, because when we first looked at this, I don't think I ever heard the word battery. But that will go through a separate permitting process. And we'll talk about that and the suppression system for it. But yeah, I'm looking at, it says transformer, neutral ground reactor, inverter, DC converter. BSS, is that a, the ESS?
Yeah, yeah, that battery storage, battery energy storage system. Yep, sorry about the accuracy.
Okay, I'm used to seeing ESS and not BSS.
Okay.
Yeah, so as you know, that these batteries are it's new to Massachusetts and we're going through some code processes and some advisories, so we'll have to review that completely before we do any building out there.
Absolutely. I'll send you the spec sheets.
Thank you, Madam Chairman.
Chief Williams, so you said it requires a twenty foot?
So I would just ask that they correct, I would just ask that they bump it up to a twenty foot access road. And then we'll, once you approve the site, we'll deal with the, the rest of the the building of the project.
Does that twenty foot wide access road change anything that was under the conservation jurisdiction?
No. The access road is entirely outside of conservation's jurisdiction.
So Brendan, you don't see a problem with accommodating the twenty foot?
I think we should be able to do that.
All right, there were no other questions from the planning board. We're gonna open up for public comment. Anyone, you see any hands raised?
Mr. Attorney James Burke would like to speak.
Oh, yeah, I was supposed to move him. But I lost my
He's, he is now a panelist.
I'm, I'm here, if you can hear me.
Can hear you.
There you are.
Thank you very much. Yes, I forgive you, Pam. I was
You know what, I can't do anything when the screen started.
All right. I had the pleasure of representing Next Grid, both in negotiations with Thorny Lee, the development of the system, and the presentation before the zoning board of appeals. As Daniel outlined, it's, it's the right thing for the right place at the right time. The question that Deputy Chief raised, I, I have a question, because what you essentially have here is a roadway that's been in utilization by the fire department for many, many years in servicing the halfway house. And it doesn't appear that the requirement for an upgrade would be substantially needed. I'd also suggest that Daniel could take the position, and I think realistically, that since you have a asphalted path of roughly about ten to twelve feet or so, that you have a gravel base on either side of that asphalted substance. So essentially, you have a twenty foot right of way available to you. It's just not all asphalted. Something that neither Next Grid nor Thorny Lee wants. So I, 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 I'm concerned about the, the last minute interjection of a fire department right of way of twenty feet. I just don't think it's necessary. And I'd like the board to consider that.
So, Madam, may I speak?
Yes.
Okay, so Jim, I just was looking at this today and didn't notice it. If we, I'm not asking for it to be asphalted, I just want a twenty foot. I thought all gravel would be fine with me. I understand coming in from Thorny Lee Terrace, that's an existing roadway. I'm talking about the roadway that's going out to the solar panels and by the solar panels.
That, I think, I think that would be substantially less of a problem. Am I right, Daniel?
Yeah, absolutely. That's how I interpreted what the fire chief was saying.
My apologies.
Was the, the internal road would be twenty feet, which is totally fine with us. If we need to go into the golf course and expand roads, you know, and what's been there for, I believe, eighty years or something like that, that's a call I can't even make, so.
No, Chief, my apologies. I, 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 I understand, and that's absolutely doable.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Were there any hands raised for the public?
There are not, there are not any additional hands raised at the moment. Last call for questions.
Someone like to make a motion? Planning board members, would someone like to make a motion?
Motion, motion to approve 159 Torrey Street. Do I need to make a comment about the twenty foot wide road, access road in there? We're all clear on where that location is. It's not what the debate was about, but we're clear on that.
Clear on that. It does not have to be asphalt, gravel's fine, as long as it's twenty foot wide access.
To approve, site plan approval, 159 Torrey Street.
And I would second that motion. Okay, roll call, Larry Hassan?
Yes.
James Sweeney?
Yes.
Sam Abrose?
Yes.
Tony Gonzalez, yes. Right, thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Thanks so much.
All right, we have Belgravia Ave, continued. Next up would be Pleasant Street. This is for a definitive subdivision. CLM Development, Representative W Engineering.
I think I got everybody. I moved Evan.
I moved Charlie.
And you got Jim. Charlie, and I don't think there's anybody else.
I think you've got them.
Madam Chairman, they begin their presentation?
Yes, I asked for the representative.
Thanks very much, Madam Chairman. I, I, my name is Jim Burke. I'm attorney at law with offices at forty-eight North Pearl Street in Brockton. And I have the pleasure to represent Charlie Macy. And assisting me is Evan Watson from W Engineering Group. And Charlie put under agreement a significant portion of land for purposes of constructing residential homes, eighteen residential lots, on an area called now Amelia Estates. It's off of Chilton, it's off of Westbury. The property is, is owned by the Carney family, which leads into another discussion that I think is important for historical reference for various members of the planning board, many of whom are new. Approximately four years ago, I was I was contacted by Mr. George Carney for purposes of assisting in the development of roughly forty-one acres of very fine, very expensive, very treasured land in the city of Brockton in the west side, which basically connects from Braymore Road, with also a connection on Chilton Road, and then the potential connection on Cypress Road. At that time, it, it became clear that it was going to be a very large project, one that would have an impact on the city, be extremely impactful on the various neighborhoods. And as a result, we sat down and met with Tim Cruz, who was then the Ward Counselor for Ward One, for purposes of establishing some sort of ground rules as a courtesy in laying out what the options were for the development of the property. At that time, the, the, the George Carney project, which is next on your agenda, by the way, Cypress Road, was represented by the engineer Ed Jacobs, who's here tonight and will be speaking. I understand Ed met with representatives of the planning board, as any good engineer would do, when they're planning a substantial development, and laid forth what the basic options were for the Carney family in the development of those forty-one very useful and treasured acres. What was suggested was the engineer, and Mr. Jacobs laid out a subdivision as a matter of right, and the subdivision is a matter of right, basically connected from Braymore Road through to ultimately Chilton Road and Pleasant Street. One thing that was absolutely clear in our discussions with the various representatives of the city and elected public officials was that the last thing in the world they wanted was a cut-through road from Braymore Road to Pleasant Street. It was high on everyone's agenda that the development be handled in a different way. I understand that the planning board was presented with the various options, which included three cul-de-sacs. One from Cypress, one from Chilton, and a additional one from Braymore Road. These cul-de-sacs, if constructed, would achieve the result that there would never be a connection or a cut-through road from Braymore Road to Pleasant Street in the city. With that, nothing had been filed with the planning board. It was just a matter of discussion. And I understand that Mr. May and members of the planning board issued some thoughts as to what would be appropriate under the circumstances. But in light of the serious consideration to the impact on the abutters, as well as the, let's say, the choices, the preferred choices of the elected representatives of the city, we proceeded to go ahead with the Cypress subdivision first. And the Cypress subdivision basically connects on a road that comes off Rockland and meanders down into Cypress and in with a, a number of residential lots that I'll let Eddie get into in terms of his discussion. We went ahead and prepared, or Eddie did, a preliminary subdivision. And within that preliminary subdivision, we presented it to the board. And we, we identified on that preliminary subdivision that in fact it was going to be a, a cul-de-sac, and also identified, I think, inconsistent with the report I read today, that they had requested a waiver in that preliminary subdivision, which was noted on the plan, and the waiver was going to be for the road length. We appeared before the zoning board of appeals at some length. And at that time, there were numerous individuals who appeared. And the, in various individuals were not opposed to the development of Cypress as a cul-de-sac, but their concern lay in the fact that the property would in fact become a cut-through to the Braymore neighborhood. It was only after the chairman of the zoning board of appeals basically assured them that it was in fact not going to be a cut-through, that the chosen development of the property was meant to avoid that ultimate outcome, that the various members of the Braymore community were in fact mollified. Toward that end, and it's the reason was that the chairman put in a condition in the zoning board of appeals decision granting a reduction in the size of those lots that the road would not connect to any other road. Again, I think that was based on what was identified as the understanding of the best interest of the community and the city and how to develop the property. That's a history. Now we talked to Charlie Macy and his specific property. Charlie and Evan went ahead and had the opportunity to prepare a proposed subdivision. And they went right to a definitive subdivision to give to the zoning board of appeals. And within that, they requested that the planning board give a waiver as to road length, which as the planner, and I'm sure various members of the planning board are aware, or are now aware, is clearly within the province and purview of the planning boards under body one of the Mass General laws. This in fact would have been, and I think is, the first instance that that waiver was before the planning board for determination of the appropriateness. And there is a procedure for the planning board to determine that in fact it, it's consistent with the interests under forty-one and within the best interest of the surrounding community. I would suggest, I, I read a, a, a note on one of the reports today that seemed to indicate that we had not requested relief under that section of Mass General Law, chapter forty-one. In fact, if you take a look at the, the waiver request that was filed as part of the application by Evan, it clearly identifies that the application pursuant to forty-one section eighty-one R requests that the planning board make a finding that in this particular subdivision, a waiver of a lot frontage is required under the zoning ordinance of the city of Brockton is in the public interest and not inconsistent with the intent and purpose of the subdivision control law. A reduction from one hundred seventy-five feet to one hundred and twenty-five feet is requested. As the planning board or members of the planning board are aware, it has been reasonably consistent within the past year, two or three, that the zoning board of appeals looks to lot sizes that are generally in the hundred and twenty-five feet range. We thought that was consistent with in fact the roadway. So we have gone out and we have paid for the review by Beta Engineering, which is an honest broker, and I think it generally does a good job in their review. Evan provided some immediate responses to Bevan Beta's initial comments. And essentially, ladies and gentlemen, we are down to one issue, one major issue. And that is whether or not the board will approve by granting a waiver under section eighty-one eighty-one L, or rather, excuse me, eighty-one R, to grant a waiver to allow a roadway that exceeds seven hundred feet under the ordinances. One of the things that I noticed in the planning board staff report, as I reviewed it today, was a language that the planning board cannot be granted, or the waiver cannot be granted. In fact, that can't be further from the truth in terms of compliance with the state law. In fact, eighty-one R gives to the planning board a large measure of judgment or discretion in making that determination. What we did was, we sat down with Chief Williams. What we did was we sat down with Chief Williams, we sat down with the planner. In order to try to find a a reasonable accommodation and how to meet what we thought was in the best interest of the city of Brockton and as described to us by various members of the elected public officials and a large volume of butters on the Braymore Road neighborhood. And what we did was we established an understanding that the adjacent subdivision, which will come up next, Cypress Road and Amelia Estates would be connected. But it would be connected for purposes of emergency vehicle access. How that is done, and it's done in numerous communities outside of the city, mostly in in residential towns and suburban residential towns. Is that you can either create a a lockbox in which the fire department, the police department and the ambulance services would have the ability to go through Cypress and enter into the roadway for emergency purposes only. As identified by the the planner, one of the issues that you face is there could be a fallen tree, which would affect the ability to get access for a particular public safety reason. That's specifically the request of what we had constructed, both with the assistance of Evan and the constrict consistency of Ed Jacobs for the two subdivisions, which uniquely enough, while it is in the Carney family. It does not have uniformity in ownership of each of the subdivisions. So in addition to the public safety right of way, that could be by breakaway fence or lockbox. We agreed to install and connect an easement for water purposes. So when Cypress connected its roadway, we would loop the water with the Amelia Estates subdivision. That is nothing but a benefit to the community. In spite of that, we met with Larry Rowley from the Department of Public Works. And Larry assured us, and I believe he assured Chief Williams, that there was still sufficient pressure as it stood to service the Amelia Estates subdivision as designed. Think that's significant. But in addition to that, Larry, excuse me, Charlie Macy went one step further. He entered into a basic agreement with the deputy chief that because there would be some uncertainty, because the Cypress subdivision, if built, will be built substantially after the Amelia Estates subdivision that is now shovel ready. That we would sprinkle the residential houses and put residential sprinkling system throughout them for fire protection purposes. So I suggest it is ultimately going to be before this board to make a decision. And they certainly have the complete authority to approve this roadway length. I would suggest that it is in fact been a condition that we've seen in Brockton in the in the recent past with with some of the exceptional subdivisions in the community. I point out that Goldfinch Drive, which is in the general neighborhood, is eighteen hundred square feet. Excuse me, it it's a roadway length of eighteen hundred feet. And it does not have an emergency connection like we are offering. That the Athens Drive and Amasha Drive is thirteen hundred square feet, well in excess of the seven hundred feet. And it does not have an emergency access as we are proposing. I suggest Briar Cliff Drive that I was involved with in the development, both in the zoning and the planning stage is eleven hundred square feet, all extremely high upscale Brockton subdivisions. And it does not have an emergency access to provide public safety purposes if in fact there is emergency situation. So I'm going to let Evan go ahead and give you some of the nuts and bolts of the subdivision. But I want the board to clearly understand it is entirely within their discretion as to whether or not we build a as of right subdivision that goes from Braymore Road to Pleasant Street. Or we construct the subdivisions as we have proposed here. It falls within the discretion of this board to make that decision. What the Carney family wants to do is to live up to the promise and representation that they made to the community when they started this project in two thousand seventeen. Evan, go ahead.
Thank you very much. Those nice and clear attorney Burke that that helped me understand the process of where we are as well. I could share my screen here if I'm allowed.
There should be no restrictions on your screen.
Okay, so I have a Google Earth image up here that just reminds us of where we are. Again, we are south of Pleasant Street, we're east of Rockdale Drive. And we're west of the the golf course here, north of Cypress and Braymore. Attorney Burke so astutely mentioned, this is kind of a unique piece of property where it's an an open section here on the west side of town. And we're adding on to the Chilton Road subdivision. We were left with a piece of property here with the sole intent of extending this road. So we come down to an intersection in the southeast corner. And it splits off onto two cul-de-sacs where we show eighteen residential lots. So here's a colored up plan of of the design plans and again, you I've I colored it up a little bit just so we have an understanding of of what we're going to be looking at. We're asking for no waivers on the width of the road. We have a full fifty foot right of way. The prescribed width of pavement. We are asking for a reduction in the actual sidewalk hardened surface. So the requirement is for eight feet of sidewalk. We do provide eight feet of sidewalk with a five foot of bituminous asphalt, two and a half foot grass strip and a half foot granite curbing.
All the way that is the Evan, that is the requirement. I know we had this discussion. And it's an eight foot layout.
Yes, so so that's that's provided for sure.
Right, so you don't need a waiver because you've got an eight foot wide layout, five feet of sidewalk, the grass strip and the and the granite curbing.
Okay, very good.
Pam, what what they are asking for is a a waiver from the concrete sidewalk is what I'm hearing.
Well, that's a separate issue, but their their layout is is
Is eight feet, yeah.
Yeah.
Very good.
It's kind of lumped that together.
Right, concrete is a separate issue and
Thank you, Pam. Yeah, so we're looking to match into what's existing here. So we have asphalt and we would like to do, continue with asphalt around on both sides.
Is Westbury is asphalt?
Yeah, I took a look at the the aerial image and it it looks like blacktop to me. I think I remember when we brought the equipment, we did some test pits out there. We were concerned about breaking it, so it's So we provide, we prepared a full set of design plans. We have the definitive subdivision plans. We have the property line surveyed all in with all the monuments shown. You show easements for the drainage basins. But easement for our water connection, which I'll I'll highlight in a moment. General, the property slopes from the west side, north is to the right, by the way, so the high point is here and everything, all the existing drainage flows down in this direction towards the farm and the golf course. So there's no stormwater heading to any of the residential properties. And our development basically continues the stormwater flow. Have designed our roads so that we maintain existing drainage patterns. You have a detention basin down here that collects from the stormwater network. All of the roadway goes to this detention basin here, which has an access easement to it. And it has a twenty foot wide gravel road that goes around it. We met with DPW and fire services and they asked for that, so we have that provided. You can see too that I think there was some talk about the shape of these lots. How they extend into this corner. But it all works out pretty well because that's where the detention basin is anyhow, so I I can't foresee any land disputes or anything because this is, this will all be encumbered by the drainage easement. This graphic, this sheet here, we show the waterline easement like we were discussing. So that settles these two lots, takes a turn up and it meets a lot line with the the proposed subdivision that's coming in. You'll see that at a moment. Eddie and I were able to to get together and make sure that those lines match exactly. And we'd be able to commit to extending that waterline and leave it there. So when the next group comes along, they could tie in, or if they're in first, we can connect right into theirs. We have road plans and profiles. We did some test pits to check out the the bedrock, so we made sure that we were above that. We we actually don't have too many issues on this site here. Have to really elevate the road to accommodate that or to to cut into blast or anything for the waterline. Let me show details. We did add a a light pole or we we are asked providing lighting now. Think on the initial submission, we we didn't have that. Like Attorney Burke was saying, we did send this out to Beta Group. They did a thorough review. It has a few comments, so we were able to make some slight revisions to the plan. There was no major revisions to the overall layout. They had a few comments on some of the technical basis of the drainage piping and and things of that nature, which we revised, they reviewed. And they actually got us back in a nice timely manner, another comment letter, which I don't see any thing in that comment letter that we wouldn't be able to
Sorry, Mr. Watson, if I could just interject here and we're running short on time here. Does the planning department have the report back from Beta?
No, I don't have a second report back.
They didn't finish the review.
May, May twenty fourth, twenty twenty one was the last that I got.
Was the last. Okay, and that's the one that I sent you that said we don't expect you to address it for tonight's meeting.
Yes, I'm sorry, Pam. We received a letter from, I believe, the the city, from your report and some input from the town departments asking us about some of the things when we first submitted, like the the light poles and the fire pole boxes and things like that. So we made those changes and you're right, these are the the things that came from Beta.
Okay.
And just want to stick to the the major issues if we can, being considered of time. So this road being twenty two hundred feet, I understand you brought some history to life regarding Goldfitch being twelve hundred or something like that, but you know, when does it stop? When do we stop exceeding the regulations? The plan to connect with these other subdivisions, sounds good. Chief Williams, you were involved with that, you you are in favor? How do you see this working?
Yes, and correct me if I'm wrong, Evan or Attorney Burke. They had agreed to give easements, one directly over to Cypress for a water hookup, so the two could communicate. And then they said that an easement would be available through the drainage easement, if I'm correct, that where they could connect with the end of Braymore Road could connect for a water purpose with this subdivision. So everything's looped around it. And is that correct?
That's absolutely correct, but in addition, the Braymore Road was going to be of sufficient size in construction to now allow another emergency access roadway for fire, police and emergency vehicles coming from Braymore to accomplish the exact same feat that we're attempting to do with Cypress.
Okay, but we're, I mean, I'm just concerned with the water pressure on each side. You know, you you go all the way up Braymore, you tend to lose some of that pressure, but
No, no question that we we have committed to looping the water up to our lot line.
Okay, very good. And all the eighteen houses in the subdivision will be sprinkled to the NFPA thirteen D standard, which is for single family and two family houses.
You you've got me built every day of the week on regulations, chief. But what they committed, what they committed to do was to sprinkle the homes in the in our discussion with you, yes.
Okay, then, Madam Chairman, yes, as long as they're sprinkling it and we're going to loop the water together, the fire department would be in favor of it. Our concern again is, you know, in the case of fire, people are going to be able to get out of their houses and the sprinkler system would allow them to do that. So thank you very much.
So that covers the fire piece, but the emergency road access and we're still waiting for the review by Beta, correct?
Correct, okay.
Madam Chair, the plans that we have in front of us on file do not reflect the Beta comment, nor do they show the emergency road connection that that we talked about. So I I assume that that will be on a revision set that come sometime in the near future.
Absolutely.
And I do want to make a comment to Attorney Burke. Editing the staff report, I found most of the cannot and changed them to should not. Obviously, I missed one. So there is one, there should only be one cannot. And that is regarding a recommendation to the to the planning board that we should not or cannot make blanket waivers. I think there's somewhere in the application, I think it's your application, I apologize if I'm incorrect. That if if we missed something in our application and it shows up on the plan, then we should be forgiven for that. And it has been brought to our attention that we need to make sure that the application actually have the specific waivers in it.
So In fact, they do, and thank you, but it was my creativity. I apologize, Mr. Planner. But I I would request, is there is, is there a specific section of the rules and regulations that prevent blanket waivers?
Haven't asked for it, you don't
Is there, I asked for it. Is there a specific section of the rules and regulations to prohibit a request for comprehensive waivers?
I I do not know, and I will have to to check that out. We have been informed by a, an attorney that each waiver needs to be listed separately on the application. Oops, sorry.
As I think we have done in this instance, yes.
Yeah.
So also specifically noted in the approval letter. So
Okay, thanks.
So, you know, another concern, this is, this gets tricky. The emergency plan is based on if Cypress is passed, which isn't, it has not been yet, so it's not like we can count on this plan. It it sounds good, it looks good on paper, but until Cypress is passed it's not solid.
Well, Cypress is coming next and they want to get it passed and they want to get it built, just as Amelia wants to get it built.
You mentioned
Yes, go ahead. I'm sorry.
You know, you 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 brought up a question that I had, because you know, this your, this plan here would be finished before Cypress. You know, you 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 brought up a question that I had, because you know, this, your, this plan here would be finished before Cypress. So how long would we wait for the emergency access to be created?
Well, again, I'll 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 leave that maybe to to Ed Jacobs to have a better handle on, I can't, I can't give you the timing. Uh, but uh, you know, you're you're roughly three hundred feet larger than Goldfinch. Uh, and Goldfinch is has successfully existed uh as constructed, and I, and I think that the in terms of the public safety issues, uh, I think the majority of them are covered uh with the the uh sprinkling system and the good faith intent uh by the developer to provide the emergency access provides a further relief and security blanket uh for the city and its emergency vehicles.
So I wasn't on the board when they approved Goldfinch, I do know that road, um. I don't remember, actually, there are some trees at the e- entrance, so, you know, God forbid a tree goes down and they can't get in or in or out of there. Um, so I can't speak for the other board members that passed that, it might, maybe they shouldn't have.
And I, I suggested, uh, Madam Chairman, when, 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 when Rob mentioned it, and I, and I understand the concern, it, same thing would happen in a four-hundred-foot subdivision. With the tree goes down.
But we're still faced with waiting for the Beta Group to review the final plan. I mean, well, to give their recommendations, it's still under review, so we we're still locked there, correct?
I I I believe that's accurate, it's an accurate statement, sure.
So your option is.
Chair.
Mm-hmm, yes.
I was going to say, I I doubt this is going to be approved tonight because Beta hasn't uh provided the final report, and we don't have a final set of plans. But there are folks who would like to, uh, attendees who would like to testify and um have their opinions known and um considering that this will probably be continued to the next meeting, we might wanna take that testimony and get that uh done tonight.
So if there are folks with their hands raised, can you please um keep your questions, comments to thirty seconds or less? Please, no repetitive questions or comments. And who will you take first, Mr. May?
So ladies and gentlemen who are attendees, if you wish to address the planning board, please use the Raise Your Hand function, which should be at the bottom of your screen. Um, you can also write questions in the Q and A function also at the bottom of your screen. And um we will read those out online, so did, Pam, did you move somebody in?
I did move somebody, he was the only one to raise his hand.
John? You were live.
John, yes.
Good morning, good evening. Um, good morning. It feels like morning, um, I I have a question that maybe Attorney Burke uh or the engineers can answer, and I didn't hear any discussion, all all I heard regarding the discussion was the extension of the roadway. But nowhere did I hear tonight about how fourteen of the eighteen lots that they're seeking a a non-conforming with respect to frontage, are they planning on going to the ZBA? Uh, what is the, uh, how how do they propose getting that relief? John, I apologize, you missed the early part of my presentation. I believe it's recently been determined within the city that the proper procedure for subdivisions seeking a frontage relief is to utilize the provisions of uh Chapter forty-one, which specifically authorizes uh communities uh under eighty-one R to grant frontage relief as part of the definitive subdivision. So whereas in Cypress, which I represented the Carney family, we went to the zoning board of appeals and secured relief uh for that frontage. Under this instance in the definitive subdivision, we've requested a waiver under eighty-one R.
And I I would highlight for the board that there's case law, uh, specifically Arigo versus the Planning Board of Franklin, uh, twelve mass appeals court, eight oh two nineteen eighty-one, and it and holds, and I quote, "A waiver of the frontage requirements of the subdivision control law by the planning board is not a variance. A landowner still needs to obtain a zoning variance from the Board of Appeals." It 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 seems to me that this is an attempt by the developer to try to short circuit the amount of potential opposition he may get, or they may get. And 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 the case law is unequivocally clear that even if a frontage waiver is obtained from the planning board, there still must be a variance from the zoning board. Um, secondly, as the chair spoke, uh, you you're attempting to take a roadway that is eleven hundred feet and double it to twenty-two hundred. Uh, now whether or not that is according to uh case law, as you stated, in the best interest of the surrounding community and not inconsistent, I would suggest what you're attempting to do is to say, the Braymore folk, we don't want to upset. But everybody who lives on Chilton, oh, well, you're the new subdivision and we're just gonna have all the traffic flow come through that subdivision, it it seems to me that um on two, two, two steps here, one, uh, the board does not have the legal authority according to case law. And two, it it seems to me to be inequitable how the Chilton neighbors are being treated as opposed to the other neighbors within the city.
Uh, John, if I may speak, uh, I respectfully disagree with you in Arigio. Uh, Arigio was decided when I was a young lawyer, uh, I'm very familiar with it, I've been involved in a number of cases, and I think that if you take another look, you'll you'll discover that the issue of a variance went to a separate section of land that was under discussion, uh, but not within the subdivision itself. And I believe there are a significant number of cases that clearly state uh that uh there is no requirement uh to go to uh any other board for permitting on frontage issues in the utilization of eighty-one R. But that's something I can provide you outside of hearing, and I'm happy to do that.
Yep, and and in my thirty years of practicing law, I'm not aware of the City of Brockton doing what you're asking them to do.
We uh have been pushed into it, uh, Attorney Connavow, because that is the new process that has been established within the City of Brockton, not by this developer, uh, but by the City of Brockton.
And I'm here on behalf of Anna Butter, who opposes the project.
Thank you.
I also would like to highlight uh for the new members of the board that at the April hearing uh it was uh two and a half hours into the meeting, uh, and I was not allowed to speak on behalf of my client in a butter, but rather was told, oh, it's just going to be an informational meeting, so I do want to let the board know that I was here for two and a half hours plus at the April meeting without the opportunity to speak. I have nothing further to say.
Yeah, but John, could you send that information about the case that you just cited um to uh uh the planning department at planning at cobma.us? So we can have our city solicitor review that?
I I've already spoken, I spoke with the city solicitor after the April meeting and gave her the case citation, but I'll absolutely send it again to Megan.
Okay, thank you, because we didn't follow up, or we, she didn't follow up with us about that. Um, Madam Chair, I have two questions um that have been typed in. And um I would like to let one of them, the anonymous attendee, um, because these are official public meetings. Um, we need to have your name, um, so if you could retype with your name on that, we would appreciate it. Uh, the first question is from Jessica Hanon Courier, and I hope I pronounced that right. And it says, can the plot plan be brought back up? Uh, and someone show us where the proposed emergency access road may link, may likely be built. So Evan, can you bring up the plan? Thank you.
If you can see that, so I've, this is the plan that I uh brought along with me in the last meeting, that the informal meeting. Uh, but I've highlighted on here where we added on. So this is um Westbury Road coming down, and so there would be a a gravel access road uh with a gate that would be here at the uh in between the the lots. Um, and then there would also be an access road that would come down to the detention basin. And that would have a gate also in between, uh, that gate have, would have a lock on it, uh, that the Fire Department would use. A lot of times, a lot of communities use like what's called a knock box, so there's a a box on the gate that has a standard lock from the Fire Department. They use their key to open that box and use the key to unlock the gate. So that wouldn't be used as a uh a central road for cars, you wouldn't be able to park there, or use it as a separate driveway or anything else like that.
Okay, thank you.
I think he also just answered.
The anonymous.
Yes. Okay.
Sorry, I read ahead.
Again, public hearing, if you could provide your name, we would appreciate it, just for the record, thank you. Are there any other questions? Comments from the community? I do not see, oh, I have one more just popped up, ah, Louisa, thank you. Soros. Soros, thank you. Um, any other questions from the community? I do not see any at this time, Madam Chair. Um, do you want to say that if we are, oh, here we go, uh, Jessica, um, Ryan Courier? Uh, again, Chief Williams, do you know how often cul-de-sacs actually get locked? Get landlocked, yeah, let me start this over again. Chief Williams, do you know how often cul-de-sacs actually get landlocked and why it would be necessary for two access roads?
I guess I do not know how often they get landlocked, and I'm not sure if all cul-de-sacs are are actually landlocked. And in some cases, uh, they do get a a second access road. Um, I'm myself is not, I'm not that concerned about the second access road. Um, I'm content with the water systems being looped and I'm content with the buildings being sprinkled. But and it's our concern, uh, there's other concerns about, that people have about emergency access. Um, but in honesty, I don't have a lot of faith in uh the emergency access roads and the homeowners association maintaining them and plowing them and stuff like that.
Oh, good, good point.
Um, Madam Chair, uh, seeing that this is going to be continued, um, and so we get the Beta Letter and the revised plan set, um, we should probably ask the uh applicant to um freeze the clock. Um, and if they could submit something in writing, we would appreciate that.
Uh, Mr. Macy. Yeah, that's agreed to, and we will go ahead and provide that to you tomorrow, if that's okay.
Thank you very much.
Send to the form.
Uh, thank you, Pam.
Everything has a form.
Yeah, everything has a form.
Sounds good.
Was a board member ready to make a motion for continuance and to freeze the statutory time clock?
Motion to continue definitive subdivisions. Pleasant Street.
Need to continue it to the date certain, or they're going to have to re-notify and republish, so.
What date?
Oh, God, no.
Suggesting, what date do we recommend, did we go into the next meeting?
Your next meeting is August.
August, August, what is that, August third? Motion to continue, August third. Now you threw me off, thank you.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All right, second by James Roll Call, Larry Hassan?
Yes.
James Weenie?
Yes.
Sam LaBros?
Yes.
Tony Gonzalez, yes.
Thank you, we continue.
All right, next, we're up for.
Jim, do you stay on?
I do, yes, I I I'm pleased to stay on.
We get to stay with you, hum, night.
All right, definitive subdivision for Cypress Drive. Are you opening, Jim?
I am, thank you very much, Madam Chairman.
Um, is Mr. Kelly representing, um?
Uh, Mr. Kelly and uh i- i- is a uh, is is a representative of the Carney family. Uh, and Ed Jacobs uh will be making the presentation, and I think uh if there are specific questions, Mr. Kelly can address them, but I believe the presentation will basically be through myself.
Okay, I moved him anyway. Okay.
Uh, and again, I'm an attorney at law with offices at forty-eight North Pearl Street in Brockton, Massachusetts, and I have the pleasure of representing uh Mr. George Carney uh for the uh subdivision uh that is proposed uh for Cypress Drive. And if it's a, if it's possible and acceptable to the board, I'll incorporate uh by reference the comments that I made uh to uh the board in relation to the historical analysis uh of the uh Carney family and its uh acquisition and development of the forty-one acres, which is now part of uh Cypress Drive. Uh, essentially, uh, to reiterate, uh, this is one of the subdivisions, one of the three legs that were uh established by Ed, and Ed can show those photos to you now that have been around since uh two thousand eighteen at least. Uh, and Ed, you wanna take it from there? You gotta unmute.
Okay, do you see the, uh, can you see the screen, which says?
Yes.
John, okay.
Yes.
As, as was mentioned by Attorney Burke uh earlier, this subdivision was uh approved as a preliminary subdivision um by the board back in two thousand and nineteen, and then we went to the uh ZBA and got approval for the waiver of frontage on the uh on the seventeen lots. And now we're back in front of the board with a definitive subdivision plan. Um, and what I wanna show you is um how this all ties together, Evan showed you a little bit earlier. His subdivision, uh, Amelia Estates, and if you look at on on this plan, this would be Amelia Estates right here, coming off of Westbury Road, and this is the subdivision right here. Our subdivision comes off of Cypress Drive and comes up through here, and this is where they both meet, right down this line right here. This is where Braymore Road comes in, and this land will be left vacant for now, but you've heard talk about a possible subdivision coming in here with a third cul-de-sac. Um, I'm gonna keep this very brief because we don't even have comments back from Beta, so I just wanna give you guys just a quick overview of what the subdivision look like, looks like. All the lots have thirty thousand square feet, and the smallest lot frontage is a hundred and twenty-seven and a half feet on the straightaways and up at the cul-de-sac. The frontage at the setback line um is what we asked for a waiver for on um in front of the ZBA, uh, that's at the building setback line. Um, they're like a hundred and seventeen, a hundred and seventeen and a hundred and fifteen feet, but the lot sizes are much larger. And if you look right here where my uh cursor is, this is where the water line will be looping through and tying into Evan's subdivision over here, Amelia Estates, this is his line coming up through here with his easement, and it'll be tying in right here, and this is also where we would be putting in, if approved, the access easement, right on top of the water line coming up through here. I have had discussions with our client, and they are not opposed to sprinkling the houses either. This is the plan that shows how it would be graded, where the drainage would be, now, the drainage comes down, much as Evan had said, from the north east down towards the southwest, uh, the drainage ponds would be down in this area down here, catching all the drainage. And off it would go down through this well and dissipate before it even reaches um the wetlands in the brook down there. And like I said, I'm just gonna keep this very brief, it's seventeen lots, the um the street length is fourteen hundred sixty feet, give or take, and um seventeen lots, they all meet the front, uh, they all meet the area. And we did some test pits out there, there was some ledge shown, that's what these little triangles are down in here, these, this is all where the ledge elevations are, so what we did in the road design is we picked up the road an average of four to five feet, so that all the pipes uh will be out of the ledge, there'll be a minimum uh blast area right at the top of this crest right here. Only about forty feet of the road should need to be fractured or or blasted. to be fractured or blasted, and that would only be for the water line and the sewer. And it's been a long night for you people. I don't want to really keep you. It's just an introduction right now. Beta has the plans, and they've got the check late, I think on the twenty-sixth or the twenty-seventh, so we don't even have any comments back from them. I'm anticipating getting comments and making the revisions and having more to talk about in August.
Okay, any other, anyone else presenting?
Nope.
I believe not.
All right, Chief Williams, do you have anything?
No, I'm good. Thank you, Madam Chairman.
Okay, any other planning board members?
So these, these two projects are both working in cohesion?
Well, they're, they're very disparate projects with a different ownership structure. However, in cohesion is a great word. It means they're cooperating with the best interest of the city in the approval process.
Thank you.
Okay, and so we're just faced with the same situation as the previous one, waiting for Beta to, to send their recommendation, so.
I don't know if there's any, any of these people want, have any comments?
Oh, if the board is done with their questions, I would ask the chair to see if anybody from the public would like to speak.
If anyone from the public would like to speak, please raise your hand.
Mary Beth, I have moved forward. So Mary Beth, if you would like to unmute and turn on your camera, would be great.
Mary Beth, if you could unmute yourself and your camera.
Or at least unmute yourself, but you're free to speak now.
Just trying.
Hello?
Hello?
Hi, Paul, Paul Corey, eighty-two Cypress Drive.
Hello?
Hi. Yes, I understand the attorney up front on North Pearl Street there said that a waiver was already granted as to the frontage on the proposed Cypress Drive subdivision. Why, why was that granted if Cypress Drive is a fully conforming subdivision? Why were they granted relief on the new proposed subdivision?
I'm not exactly sure how to answer that question, but in fact, in order to build the lots that were substandard sized at that time, it was a requirement that you first go to the zoning board of appeals prior to making a determination of the definitive subdivision, and that's what we did, and they secured relief.
I guess that's a surprise to me because at a prior meeting, the chair had the prior chair before his retirement, it stated that Cypress Drive was a fully conforming subdivision, and that there weren't going to be any waivers met, and also Mr. Cruz over on, I think it's Fabio F., reiterated the same. And I just don't know how we went from having no waivers and variances to now all of a sudden we do. I've attended every meeting for the past few months.
And the variance, we went in front of the zoning board in two thousand and twenty for the subdivision.
All right, well, maybe I wasn't, maybe I wasn't aware of that.
Yeah, we had to, we, we went with the prelim. The way it worked back in Brockton back then is we went to the planning board with a prelim, which showed the hundred and twenty-five feet of frontage, hundred and twenty-seven and a half feet of frontage on the lots. And they approved it verbally, and then then we had to go in front of the ZBA because that was a process back then, and we showed them the same plan, and they approved the, the plan as well, showing the hundred and twenty-seven and a half feet of frontage on the lots, kind of one seventy-five.
All right, well, thank you. It sounds like it's a done deal now. But it's just a little bit surprising to me that I was unaware of that even taking place. Or that they would be asking for that. I would have spoke up at the time if time was available to do so.
Is there anyone else raising their hand, Rob?
Madam Chair, I have a written question from Joe Nasrallah that says that in the March twenty-twenty meeting, the zoning board acknowledged that there is an existing problem with water runoff from this area to Braymore Road. They suggested that this can be addressed. Can you explain how this has been addressed? That Jacobs is the answer to that.
Yeah, we've captured all the water with swells before it reaches that vacant land I showed you earlier. That's going to be left vacant for Braymore, and it runs into detention ponds, which will handle the runoff. It'll dissipate over time, and there'll be what we're a lot, what we have to do by law in Massachusetts is have zero net increase for stormwater runoff. And that will be all taken care of through pay review with Beta. So once we get their review back, if they have any questions on the drainage, that will all be addressed then.
Okay, thank you. And I don't know if you want to show that on your drawing. Pull that up, that's up to the chair. And then I do have another question here, but it's from a, a case that we opened, but we were waiting to hear back from Attorney Paul Clancy, and Mario Andrade would like to continue to the next planning board meeting, which is August third.
That's for Lefoy Street?
Yes, Sam is nodding. Thank you, Mario.
Any other questions from the community?
I don't see any other questions.
Okay, so.
Jessica Hanon Courier. Actually, it'd be best if you could put the, the plan up so that she can, so you can point to it where your detention pond is and how that blocks the runoff.
So if you look at this plan, up here is the top of the hill. Right about here is the apex. From here down, the water's going to run this way, and we have a swell coming down, a pipe coming down this way to a swell right here. So this will go by pipe to, to, into two catch basins down a pipe and exit right here and start running down this way. None of the water is going to reach this over here. Now I'm going to go back up to the other sheet. This, this will maturation right here. Come down into this detention pond right here. The water will collect right here. It'll dissipate. Some of it will fill up. It'll spill over into here. This is a third detention pond right here. And then this has an emergency overflow, and we'll come down into here into this well with check dams and just dissipate down into this well. Nothing's happening from here down. This is just going to be left as it is, this property right here, and it will eventually work across here and into the wetlands.
Okay, and you can see on the very bottom of that page that that is the last house on Braymore, is that correct?
It is, correct.
She continues to ask, what about the current problem? And I don't know what her address is. If you could let us know what her address is, so we can see it on the, on a map to know where she is. And we can figure out where, okay, it's two-two-five.
She's the last, last house on the right.
Last house on the right of Braymore?
On the right, so that's the south side of the street? Excuse me, the east side of the street?
I would think so, because that's, the house we're showing there is two-twenty.
She's across the street.
Right.
Which you don't obviously see on the map.
No.
So this, but you, you see that from Ed's drawing that there is a, a series of detention ponds that run north to south that divide this property off. So anything coming from the proposed development lot runs into these ponds. Now, if there's water coming from, and I can see the topography here, coming from due north, that obviously does not go into the pond because that is outside of the, of the project boundary.
Right. The, the topography, as you can see right here, is coming down this way. This will all be gathered into this pond. So the water that this, this butter is getting is most likely coming from here. This is a large knob of ledge right here, and this is probably coming down through here and running into Braymore. That is still going to be doing that, unfortunately, but this water that was coming down here before and going on to the property will be interrupted right here and go this way now. So hopefully there'll be a a decrease in groundwater traveling towards her destination.
Okay, any other questions, Mr. May?
I have no, I see no hands raised. I think you all have been emailed a a petition and comments from neighbors as well as a recent email from Counselor Farwell. But I.
They have not received Counselor Farwell's because it came in.
Oh, wait, no, it went to the planning board, didn't it?
I forward to a reason that came in late, and I think she has it.
Okay. But none of those issues that Counselor Farwell is addressing are on any of these plans, so.
No, it went to us. It went to us, but yeah.
Oh, it just went to planning department.
Planning department, but it'll be added into the public.
The file.
Into the file, and the, yes, the petition was added into their Google Drive, so they all had access to that. Again, most of that was dealing with Braymore Road.
So Madam Chair, I don't see any more attendees who want to ask questions. If there are no more questions from the planning board, you may want to continue this to the August third meeting and wait for the Beta report. And freeze the clock, thank you.
Does someone want to make a motion to continue this to the August meeting and freeze the clock?
Yes, Madam Chair, I'll make that motion to continue this matter to August third and freeze the clock. Thank you.
Thank you.
Second. Second.
Roll call, Larry Hassan?
Yes.
James Sweeney?
Yes.
Sam Abros?
Yes.
Tony Gonzalez, yes. Thank you.
Has the applicant, has the applicant agreed to a freeze?
I'll get, I'll, I'll talk to Pam and whatever Pam wants, she'll get.
The next form. Pam wants my cake.
We also need to make a motion to continue Lefoy Street.
Thank you.
If there's anyone here from the community for this being continued, I don't think there's any questions. Rob, can you confirm that?
Any questions on Lefoy as we continue it? Well, we didn't open it, so we can't.
No, okay, all right. That sums that up. Okay, a motion then to continue sixty-three Lefoy Street.
Motion to continue sixty-three Lefoy Street for permission to return to ZBA to August third. Second.
Roll call, Larry Hassan?
Yes.
James Sweeney?
Yes.
Sam Abros?
Yes.
Tony Gonzalez, yes. All right. And did I miss anything, Pam, on the agenda?
No.
Okay, I make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
You can't make the motion. Somebody else make it.
I was asking someone to make.
To adjourn, second.
I do.
All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Pam, I do have a question. Do, do we have to come in next week to sign anything? You'll let us know?
Um, yes, there'll be quite a bit for you to sign, and I'll shoot you all an email, and we are open to the public, so you'll be coming into City Hall to sign.
Just wear a mask.
And wear your mask, because.
And thank you to the public.
Thank you.
Good night.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.